Okay, you don't mean. No, they have a certain question. So the. They're all. Yeah. And that's. Of course, they're all. And I accept. We're. I want to. See, they will help us. The house. Better. We. So how are you today? How about? And. Do you know? Oh, that. Well, we're so young. Just. You have a little even in the. Before this. So. I'm doing. His own. What is this? That is. My. 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 Scary direction. Let's do. I wanted to feel. So it's. So. But you. I'm. 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 It was trying to try. You know. I'm. 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 Yes. 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 My husband did. Wow. 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 So. Yeah. I do. I mean, why? I'm. 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 This is. I didn't look. I grew up. First. Yes. 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 Where did you go? The chance? It's not any. It's. 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 I'm gonna. Brothers. That. I think. I didn't quite get that. That Haven Road project. About a hundred and nineteen thousand. She. She gave a number and somebody talked right over her. Oh. It's. That. 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 It's. Right. It's. It's seven one P M. This. It's. 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 Yes. I don't. So it's near the front. There. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Recording. It. On. That. We can start off with a moment of silence, please? If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the. By. By the United States of America. And to their involvement for rich and saints. One nation. Under God. And with his. All. With. Their. Exceeding. Theirs. As. It's. For. Our. Just for breather, if you happen to have a cell phone, please turn it off or put it on silent. City Clerk Domingo, you'll take a roll call first, please?
Councilmember Williams.
President.
Reed. President.
Jackson. Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Davis.
Present.
French.
Here.
And Nancy.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda?
So. Move.
Support. Any additions, deletions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This evening, we don't have any presentations or recognitions, no need for a public hearing. Uh, comments. If there's anybody in the gallery that would like to speak on an agenda item, you have an opportunity to stand. And three minutes is yours. Do we have anybody? All right, let's move forward. Consent calendar. In your packet, you have minutes to our December nineteenth study session, along with our December nineteenth regular council session minutes. So I have a motion to approve. So move. Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Individual discussion. On your desktops. You have the application for three renewal for medical grower permits. Do we have any questions?
Motion.
Oh, sorry. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Support. Any questions in regards to the permits? You have a question come?
No, I was just gonna. Just tell council, um, these, these are just renewals, they're medical, they've all, they've passed departmental review, they've passed our offices review, planning commission and recommended approval. Um, and just a reminder, the copies need to be turned into the clerk at the polls.
Questions in regards to the applications? City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Nancy.
Yes. In your packet, you also have the application again for Trevor White to be appointed to E D C. Um, he is here with us this evening, so Trevor, if you would like to come up. Counsel would like to get a little information about you.
All right.
So go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone, I am Trevor White. Been a part of this community now for over twenty plus years now. Uh, my wife is Tenaya White, must be rough, so I don't know if some of you may know the rough family. So Chris Ruff is my father-in-law, so yeah, four children, two girls, two boys. Our boys are the youngest, five and six now, because our youngest just turned six December twenty-four. Uh, my two oldest, one is in college at, uh, Alvin College right now, and my second oldest is just finishing up high school this year. So this current past COVID. Uh, I turned in my letter resignation to my former employer and started my own business, so created fourteen global enterprise, named that with my four children.
Do we have any council member questions for Mr. White?
Look, you see.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, so what, what type of business is that you're in?
Um, I do controls programming, so it depends on the various of customers, so it can be software update, it can be electrical or mechanical update. It just depends on what the customer wants it needs to.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Um. Your addition to, um, the E D C board, what are you hoping to accomplish? Or add to the board?
As far as add to the board, I would say in my experience and knowledge, as far as in the tech industry and manufacturing. Um, I think with my parents, I can bring that to the table and bring something new to Alvin.
Okay. It's. We. Can't. I'm saying.
No, I don't remember if we, but did I, did they make a motion to approve?
Yes, I made it.
Okay. Who's such a?
Did you? I never hear the motion to approve.
I think, I think, well, just to be safe.
We did not do that.
No motion in a second.
I move.
Do I have a?
Second.
All right. Do we have any other questions for Mr. White?
And actually, we'll talk about.
Well, thank you for being here with us this evening, I know at the last meeting you were out of town, so we appreciate you making the time to be here with us, so that everybody has a little better sense of who you are.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Nancy.
Yes. Uh, next, we use have the application for Mr. Jerome Harvey on your desktop. Um, he, this is a renewal. And Mr. Harvey is here with us this evening as well. I'm not sure if you all know Mr. Harvey, but if you would like to, to Harvey, if you'd like to come up and say if you were to buy yourself, maybe some leave council members who doesn't know you.
No motion in a second.
Oh, I have a motion to approve. Some will support. Come on down. You're here, you might as well come on down. Take your time. Good.
Wow.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for the time to address you, the council, in the community. Um, I have, uh, served a term with you on the E D C. And I very appreciate of the opportunity to serve again. So without the strength and the guidance and leadership of the community, yourself, Mayor, for putting me forward as a candidate. And hopefully, ideally, the support of your council, I will try to continue to be a significant part of the E D C. And, um, the growth for this community. It is my sincere feelings that we as a community need to grow community. We need to grow economically. And I think it is most important that we grow with some harmony. Um, all are not led by one footstep. But it takes multiple footsteps to get to a finish line. So with that, any questions you may have, I am happy to entertain, though I'm surprised by. This opportunity. That's with Jack.
Um, yes, uh, I, I like that word of multiple footsteps, so I'm hoping that as you serve this next term, that you can be one of those multiple individuals to help. Help us succeed and bring in more manufacturing and more things that will help build up our city.
Clearly, one of my primary focuses for this community is more manufacturing. I think that that economic stimulus is key and fundamental for, for this community to take other footsteps forward. So yes, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember Lawler?
Great. Thank you so much, um, can you, uh, just tell the community the things that, uh, have positively moved forward on the E D C while you were, uh. While you were spending time here for the, your term?
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman, I didn't.
Can you, can you tell the public, uh, things that were accomplished while you were on the E D C board? Um, this past term?
Um, yes, certainly. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right.
Uh, certainly, we have a new leadership at the E D C. Uh, I see her in the audience as well, um, and I think she brings a, a fresh view of needs by the community. Uh, I happen to be on a subcommittee to identify her, um, and, uh, was very impressed with her credentials. Uh, she has certainly, uh, a multi-discipline background that I think is fundamentally important for us. And I think one of the things that is also key is she's a C P A. So she has a, a firm grasp on accounting requirements, uh, budgets and the like, and I think that's a, a key fundamental part of it. I also happen to know that she does have some exposure, uh, in the industrial world and in some of the, uh, efforts to grow the communities that she's been in. From housing, economic, luxury and the like, and I think that's something that's important for us here in Alvin as well. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions for Mr. Harvey? Well, thank you for being with us this evening, um, thank you for coming up and.
May I go now?
You.
I wanna wait for the votes.
City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Nancy.
Yes. So I just wanted to say a quick thank you, uh, for Mr. Harvey for reapplying, um, you know, this, as you know, it's. We do spend a lot of time in the meetings, we put in a lot of work and effort, um, to make sure that Alvin is moving forward. Um, Mr. White, and we hope that you will bring your talents to the table when we are at our meetings, and I know that our new C E O is definitely pleased with your contribution that you're gonna bring forward and Mr. Harvey with what you've done in your past term and looking forward to your next. All right. Okay. Next, on. The agenda. I got the right one, yeah. Do I have a motion to approve of resolution twenty twenty-three oh one?
So move.
Support. City Manager Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so included in your packet is the project agreement for the drinking water asset management grant that we received from, um, Eagle. We received a grant in the amount of four hundred and one thousand dollars. This grant will go towards identifying the roughly two thousand unknown water service lines, the materials that, um. That are included in those water lines, and this is the formal agreement. Um, this resolution will authorize me to be the designated, designated signer for the agreement, as well as the pay estimates that will go along with this project. Um, the agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney and we are recommending approval.
Do we have any questions for our city manager? City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Nancy.
Yes. I have motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh two, um, for the contract with M D A.
Some will.
Support.
City Manager Snyder? City manager Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this contract with M D A is for the re for replacement of the North Alvin Street Bridge. I'm very happy to have this document before you, because I know we've all received a lot of complaints regarding the condition of that bridge, and I know it is well overdue to have it um, fully replaced. So this um, contract is the formal agreement between the city and M D A for the um, to have that work completed. The contract has been reviewed by the attorney, and we are also recommending approval. This will be signed off by the mayor and the clerk, just in reference with the city charter. It's a little, it's a different program than the um, the agreement that you just previously um, approved, it does not have the pay estimates tied into that.
Do we have any questions for city manager on this? City clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Brian.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yeah.
Davis.
Yes.
And Mary Snyder.
Yes. There's a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh one.
Some more.
Support.
City manager.
So this is the Dr. Andrew French ordinance. Just kidding. Um, this, this is um, the ordinance that council requested regarding um, a modification to the unlawful dumping ordinance that presently exists. It basically carves out an exception from October one to December one of each year where uh, individuals can place um, waste or refuse materials specifically for pickup within the city easement. Um, as long as it doesn't exceed one week at a time. So I think that allows for what the city was attempting to accomplish while simultaneously ensuring that we're keeping the easements clear. You know, when they need to be cleared, so um, that's the only modification that we made, and uh, it should address the issue that was raised as a concern.
Do you have any questions for our attorney or his document?
Um, thank you for the good natured ribbing and thank you for your work on it. I know those of us who have to, please, and people who really appreciate the opportunity to not get cited.
City clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Donald.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes. So I have a motion to approve uh, the engineering proposal for the North Alvin Great Bridge project.
So move.
Support.
City manager Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So you all approved the contract for the um, replacement, so now this is a proposal provided by Whiteman and Associates. They're the engineering firm that the city has an agreement in um, place with. They have provided us proposal to complete the engineering work for the actual construction project. They have been working with the city the entire time, helping us with the preliminary engineering for this project. Um, scope of services will include, they are a registered professional engineer, onsite construction observation, materials testing, construction, skate, staking, contract administration, and they will hold progress meetings as a as the project moves forward. Um, they propose to do this work for a fixed fee of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They did provide these estimates to us when we were per um, preparing the twenty twenty-three budget, so that has been included in this year's budget, so we are recommending approval.
Any questions for city manager on this? City clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
And Mary Snyder.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the Whitman Engineering Service Proposal for the Haven Road Project?
Some more.
Support. City manager Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So our second construction project for this year is the replacement of Haven Road. Um, that includes improvements to River Street and Haven Road from South Superior Street to the east city limits, approximately um, point nine four miles in length. Um, similar to the scope of work that will be completed for the North Alvin Street Bridge. Um, Whiteman will be doing the same level of work for this project. Um, they have proposed to complete this for a fixed fee of a hundred nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, similar to the other proposal. This was included in our twenty twenty-three budget. And we are recommending approval.
Councilmember Lawler?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, you said this project covers ninety-four miles, digital?
Point nine four mile.
Point nine.
Okay, thank you. And the other question? City clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed. And Mary Snyder.
Yes. Use your agenda items, anything from council? That you would like, yep, from hang rooms.
Yes, um. I would like to see uh, a a grant. A grant reporting, like have added to the um, the homepage. And also, um, and now I'll provide more clarity through email on this, but um, like grant updates, so we know kind of like where we're at as far as council goes with the grants that we're currently working on. Um, I know we're still waiting on the N E P grant, but just if we had like an update to see, you know, where we were. But I would imagine it's probably gonna take a couple, couple of months to actually get the response if we got it or not. But just some grant reporting stuff, um, the city of Jackson does it pretty well. I looked at their site the other day. Um, but something like that, along those lines.
Any other agenda, yep?
Did we ever give a date to how the workers retreat that we were talking about off that last meeting? Was there a date set?
Yes, it's going to be that first um, weekend, Saturday in February.
Four.
Yes, Saturday, February fourth.
Nine to twelve.
Nine to twelve, yes.
You're bringing donuts?
So.
Sure.
So are we calling this a retreat, our?
Just a study session.
Because I I I noticed that, I I understand it's a, it's a study session. And just for clarity, so that we all get the same understanding what it's for. We're going over the goals.
Yep.
Those are goals. Okay, so I do believe you might need to come back and say what you're speaking of, because these are our goals that we were talking about that um, manager Snyder couldn't get to us uh, in January, I mean, in December. So she wanted to review the goals with us on February the fourth, so that we could come together um, to see how we want to go forth in twenty twenty-three, correct? And she's not gonna.
No, so similar, uh, retreat, a lot of municipalities refer to it as a retreat. It's where we'll come together and you'll set the goals for twenty twenty-three. So I did provide you with an update on the twenty twenty-two strategic goals where we're at with those.
Mm-hmm.
So now we will work to identify new goals to work towards accomplishing this.
And who all, who will all be a part of that?
It'll be all city council and then all of the department heads from within the city, and we'll come and I didn't prioritize what.
And I had also requested, because we used to in the past uh, things that we saw that we would like to see done. I, and that's what I had mentioned last time, if everybody would get their things together and get them to you in time, so that you would have time to prepare for answers for the things that we uh, requested. That's why I was thinking, that's why I had said that maybe we could turn them into you this week. And then that would give you time to to uh, get together answers or whatever is needed.
And I reached out to M M L because we did discuss bringing a facilitator in to work with us during that work session. I did email him that same week that we had our last meeting. I know a lot of offices closed down for the holiday. I sent a follow-up um, email this morning, so I will let you know as soon as I get a response from them.
Okay, yeah, that was one, sorry, Mayor.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, that was one of the concerns, if it would come from M M L, or, yeah, so that we able to choose who the individual would be. Okay. And um.
So yes, if you have items that you would like to see discussed, get them to me, and then I will work to prepare to have information ready to go for that that Saturday session.
Nice. So uh, turning hardness, we'll talk to you later.
Any other agenda items?
Yep, not necessarily agenda, well, it is because of presentation, and I was just wondering if you had the opportunity to contact Robert Phillips uh, with Habitat. Because that's something that hopefully in the spring, we can pull together and maybe get some work done in Alvin, more than he has done.
I have, but I will follow up. I have not received a response.
Okay. Uh, I also sent him a list of homeowners uh, who are in need of home repairs as well, and all of these people really fall within the guideline for Habitat, so if we have the need there and we have the resources, we should be able to make progress this summer and this spring.
Any other agenda items? All right, uh, public conduct. Anybody in the gallery would like to stand and address council? Yep.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to, my name is Virgie Ammerman. I live at three oh five East Main in Homer. Um, I just wanted to express my appreciation for a full board. I'm excited. Um, I I it's regretful that um, Andy was not able to stay on the board, so thank you so much for replacing um, Andy's position with Mr. White. Um, I've had a chance to work with Mr. White. We're working on growing his business, so I'm um, his business is very similar to my ex-husband's business, so it's been fun to, you know, kind of work on ways to grow that, but he's got a very innovative thought process, and I think that's gonna be great for the board, so I'm very welcomed, and to bring um, um, Mr. Harvey back is um, also especially I'm grateful for that, because we have a lot of work to do in uh, filling our new industrial park and enhancing our current industrial park and bringing in manufacturing opportunities, because we absolutely need those economic drivers, so thank you so much. It's going to be an incredible year. Um, I did send out an update if anyone would like it, and I didn't get you on the list. This is new for me, so I'm happy to resend it. We've got lots of committees that we're filling positions for, so um, if you didn't see that over the holiday, let me know, I can send it back out, so thank you so much for all your support.
Virgie, thank you so much for all your hard work.
Absolutely, yes. It was nice getting that report too and seeing the things that you were doing.
Oh, great.
Yeah, thank you.
City manager's report.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have anybody?
We do.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, a brief uh, report was included in the packet. Um, I just, one thing I do want to note. Um, the Eagle dam risk reduction grant program, we did submit our app, our free application at the beginning of December. We were notified um, like for the holidays that our pre-proposal has been selected to move forward for um, a complete application for the twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-three grant cycle. Um, they received fifty proposed projects with over fifty million dollars in requested funding, so I'm very happy to see that our project was selected to move forward and possibly receiving funding. The deadline for that grant application is January third, the first. I am working with um, Susanna, who is a project engineer, who has also helped us with the dam's feasibility study to make sure that we get that grant application completed and submitted on time, so good news. And that's all I have.
Do we have any questions for our city manager? Very good. Um, councilmember Hallings?
Sure.
Anyone's wanna make a comment on? Put the good in order?
No, well, I am looking forward to uh, twenty twenty-three. Um, definitely, we, there's no lack of projects uh, that cannot be addressed, um, and I think at our goal setting, I should be able to put new things in writing that we all want to focus on as a community. So definitely like what Councilwoman was saying, bring your pet projects. Um, if we can get them added to our twenty twenty-three.
All right. And if you know, the good other orders? Do I have, yep, Mayor for town, Jackson?
Is there a date we need to give those presents to you so you can have them as we go through? That we not shout them out to, you just want us to mark them to move up.
Um, the sooner the better, um, especially if you're looking for us to provide you with information, if you can get it to us sooner rather than later, that will allow us to prepare for that, um, to have everything ready for that session.
Yeah, because I I'm assuming that you all have some pet projects you have in mind. So I started, I think it's a groundwork laid for them. Better off will be. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Support. Uh, Davis say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned, seven thirty P M. Good job, everyone.